Next item is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. Is there discussion, corrections? Joe?
Uh, I, although I was not here at the meeting, I read the minutes of the last meeting and noticed that uh, the chairman stated it would be approved at the meeting on the twenty-seventh of February. Uh, speaking of the town plan.
Uh, I think that they removed that.
Okay.
They removed that. I think it was Liz and I got the message through Karen.
Yep.
They removed it. Yeah.
Okay, I just was gonna add that.
Must have been, must have been the planning commission, I guess, that did it. Yeah.
Gotcha.
Anything else?
Nothing else.
Nothing else. All those in favor of approving the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Next item is approval of the minutes to thirteen twenty-three.
Make the motion when you approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
I, I don't think I can second that, Mr. Chairman.
I'll have to second it. I'll second it. Okay. Can you vote, Joe?
I don't think I can.
I go. Is, uh, Dick, are you there?
No.
No? I guess we'll have to table it then. We don't have a call. Okay, that takes care of that. Chief?
Well.
No, citizens' comments first, I'm sorry. So, on anything that's not on the agenda. Mary? Mary McIntyre?
Yes, Mary McIntyre. Um, so I haven't reported to you in a while from the uh, Economic Development Revitalization Committee. Uh, we had a very productive meeting. We are really building momentum after meeting with the businesses um, in November, and we're following up on all the suggestions. Um, and one of the suggestions was to delve into using uh, the Chamber and Economic Development of the Ron Chamber of Commerce and Ted Mulnar met with Lyle Jefferson and Olivia Williams, and that proved to be a very productive meeting. However, they um, they suggested a couple of things that I'll just make you aware of. We can, we can work on it, but um, they've suggested that the town have a Facebook page. We said we have a Facebook page. But what they want is more activity, not just the emergency stuff that's going out on the Facebook page. But we're just guessing that that's, that's the resolve. Ted didn't realize we have a Facebook page, but those of us who are active and unfazed said we do. But looking back, it is a lot of weather advisory and things like that. It's not so much town law. So, that is a suggestion. Uh, also, um, they are suggesting that um, we get a director of marketing for our town. That um, we pick a direction, um, and we will be giving some advice on this. Uh, we're going to look into this ourselves, but we find a, a direction, whether we want to focus on on tourism or younger generations staying here, what, what we should have our focus be. Um, and maybe even more businesses. We are working on the business aspect. Um, so I just throw that out there that one of the buzzwords is director of marketing. Um, that's not anything we've had in the past. Um, but we'll come back to you with more information. Uh, the other thing that they advised us to do is do inventory. And they gave us a sheet, so some of you may be contacted to help us out with finding out, um, all the assets that we have in town. Not physical assets, but things to do and, and places for people to see, uh, those things, uh, names and attractions, website addresses. Um, and they too have suggested, um, and we came to you before, we're suggesting that we have a town website, and I know that the town has a town website, but again, our town website is work on resource for citizens, not necessarily for the person to research content. So, uh, those are a couple of the things that we're working on, um, and that has been pointed out that we should bring to your attention. One other point, uh, that Ted Mulnar has asked me to bring to the board in light of the, uh, I believe it was in Ohio, the train derailment. He wondered if the town should put out a statement on how we are prepared as a town for a train derailment, as well as a notification to the town, um, or at least for us to be aware of the types of companies and products being shipped through our town. And if there was a crash, how would we deal with it?
I don't know what's going on there now.
So, um.
That it, Mary?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any questions for Mary? Joe?
Yes, uh, did Lyle, um, or his associate give any indication of, of comparable examples of towns our size that have directors of marketing?
That was, um, Ted mentioned that, I don't recall, and it makes me um, they only that other towns have, but as far as comparables, um, no, I
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's news to me. I haven't heard of any towns our size that have, that role.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Poltony has a marketing, uh, director, um, who is starting to really get involved out there in other organizations other than a meeting the other night, and the young lady, she
Is it Sarah?
Sarah Pelkey.
Yeah, she was one of them.
Yeah, so, so that is there, and I know Brandon, their Parks and Rec director is also a part of their marketing team, or is, is the head of marketing. I don't say the team, I should, I'll retract that statement. They have, they have a marketing person.
Okay. Anything else? Joe?
Yeah, uh, when, when you speak of inventory, um, I'm reminded of the SWAT analysis meetings that you have held. And, uh, it would seem to me that those generated a lot of
They did. We just have to now
inventory ideas that I haven't seen.
Yeah, we just have to make a list of it, and we did, I don't know that we wanted that.
I don't
I wasn't a chairperson back then, so I really don't know, but I can follow up on it.
And then the issue of, of risks associated with train traffic, uh, through our community is something that I've been very concerned about for a number of years. Uh, I think it's a very complicated issue, from what I understand. Uh, the, the, the government does not own the tracks, and there's a little way that we have of even finding out what's being transported on those tracks, although some folks that I know socially have told me, and I, I, I believe they knew what they were talking about, that there's a lot of toxic material which would do a number on our wellheads and a lot of other things. If, if it wouldn't be the same kind of capsize here that they'd have in Ohio. So, I, I think that's a very serious issue, and I think it probably, um, is beyond the scope of the town's authority and influence and power to, uh, investigate and control. But I would like to, I would love it if we could get our representatives interested in this and, uh, working with their colleagues in Montpelier to try to get a handle on, uh, what's taking place with the goal of reducing risk. I think the issue of emergency response, that, that's ours, and, you know, I think, uh, for the best of my stability, we manage a situation like that, but, uh, that's the way it happens. And this is not as bad as the situation that took place ten years ago in Canada.
Anything else for Mary? Mike?
Just, just a statement on that, directing it to everybody, I guess. Um, the town did do a tabletop exercise a few years ago on a train derailment because it is a, it is a valid concern of this, this thoroughfare, this, this, our train thoroughfare here. Um, and, uh, so we, we've talked about response, um, and talking about what's coming to the town. We do know primarily what comes through the, some of the threat stuff. Uh, we worked with the fire department, uh, through our local emergency operations plan. Problem is, we can't control what comes through here, and so we know where the vulnerable areas are, whether it's passenger trains, derailing out in the middle of an area that's not easily accessible and trying to get to them, whether it's in the river or wherever. Um, and then the wellhead area in town and the, and along the river, it's, the river's everywhere along the train, the train tracks here, so it's a, it'd be a huge threat of ethanol, which is one of the biggest commodities that comes through here, uh, where to, where to spill, uh, and leak out into the environment here. Uh, but we, we were, we've been told before, it's like, yeah, you know it's coming through. You don't know where it's gonna happen if it ever does, and our, our job was response, but I, I certainly would echo what Mr. Mark said, and, you know, if our, if our elected officials could talk about this and, um, provide more substance on it, it'd be great, but I just know that if we have anything that derails here in town, one of our major things is evacuation, and, and that's, that's a struggle, so, but I won't get into that part, but, um, but yeah, I echo the concerns, I guess.
Okay, and then, um, one other thing I could say also is, um, we were one of the groups that the town manager Jones, um, brought to our attention, uh, ARP grant, um, regarding pedestrian lawfare, and, um, one of our members, uh, Pete, uh, Pete Tyrell, um, would like to tackle that issue together.
She's working together, yeah.
Together with, uh, Chief Montello. So, I think we're heading in a really productive, uh, direction and may even be reaching to build some subcommittees, uh, as we're going, because there's a lot of work to be done. Um, and most everybody on our committee, you know, has full hands down, so it's tricky.
Okay. Anything else for Mary?
Do I have one more, Mr. Chairman, I have one more question or one more statement?
Sure.
The town, the town website and the town Facebook, um, can be used for whatever we deem necessary. It's, it's really, the message has to, I think, come from the, the end, like, if it's Cedar Act related, um, we want them to provide us what they want said. We, we can make the postings, um, or give permissions to, I think, we, we gave permissions. It's, it's not the easiest system to use, um, but it's the same, uh, company that uh, that we use, that other towns use. It's kind of like municipal, a lot of municipalities use it. Um, but we can use that for more than me putting out messages about snowstorms.
Which are you talking about, Facebook or?
Both.
Yeah, the, the website, if you look at other towns, they have their own, like, it may be Chamber of Commerce, which we don't have per se. Um, they're still a small one, but not terribly active. Um.
We can make, we can change the, the landscape of, of our, our website to tailor to certain needs. It's just, we gotta know what the need, what, what you'd like, so if you wanna come in and talk with myself and Karen, uh, at some point, or we attend one of your meetings, uh, I'd certainly listen. Yeah, I'd certainly listen to what you have to say, maybe see if we can make it work.
Yeah, I know when Christina was on the committee, um, that had to done, but, uh, and she might revisit this so that we don't have to read back.
So, whatever, if I have to come to one of your, uh, meeting, I, I'd like to hear what you have to say, I'd certainly do that.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you very much, Mary. We appreciate the update. Uh, police report, chief?
Yes, good evening, board. I think Dick's on, well, Dick, Dick on?
No, Melanie, is it Melanie or is it Dick on or both?
Whoever did the unit.
Yeah.
All right, so y'all, you, you all got the calls of service?
It's Melanie.
No, thanks.
You got the, uh, you got the report for calls of service. Um, really, one of the things that probably stand out the most, we did have increasing service calls. Uh, you know, we're still doing a lot of fingerprints, um, got a lot of direct patrols, um, agency assists, about average being nineteen, fourteen, or fifteen. The traffic stops when, when, not in January. So, you know, I think it reflects the winter, um, really, the welfare checks. A lot of people are on vacation in January, so a lot of people aren't even here. I say a lot, a pretty percentage of people are here. Any questions on the calls, calls for no questions on that? Were there arrests? Um, I think we had nine, up a couple arrests from seven. Nothing stands out outside of, um, you know, what they were. Traffic violations, you see the tickets obviously went up in January from December. Most of them were speeding violations, um, a few stands out there, a couple inspections were up a little bit. And calls of service to university, uh, we had four in January. Probably before they were in the because they were on the bottom line. Or it could actually have, or I take that right. Well, also, well, a couple of the things, see, traffic stops, let me mention them. So, the school's back in session this week, so the lot, uh, you know, well, it's been kind of quiet in the winter, which we normally would expect. No forty violations were written. I mean, thousands that we walked into the town in the area that we use to pull. I suspect as the weather gets warmer, it will increase. Um, we did get our vehicle to Edram Dock, they are getting at the foot right now. I am meeting with the Addison County Sheriff to this week to see what he wants for the price. Um, when, when that happens, I want Mike to know whether the board will authorize me to sell the vehicle for whatever price we agree upon, which is the fifteen. And uh, as Mary said, I'm working with Pete and actually Ethan on the ARP grant. So, we're putting in for two solar radar speed signs. Um, I told her I'd get the quotes. I did work on some of her narrative today, cut down some stuff because she, she had too much written in there now. Her fault, it's just that you're limited to thousand words, uh, so you have to really keep things down. So, I, I sent her a draft. Um, she'll look at it tonight, and then he's gonna look at it, and we'll just kind of hammer that out before the fifteen. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Joe?
Uh, regarding the ARP grant, Chief, uh, I, I'm not familiar with that. Is that, uh, will that be a request to the select board uh, for use of the funds that are being set to the town?
Uh, the ARP? No, this is just a separate grant for basically focusing on the seniors in the community. Involving crosswalks, we're looking at putting a couple new crosswalks on by, um, Creek Road by, uh, Marina. And, um, I had made some suggestions about cutting down to one big crosswalk in the middle of the village, which is, I think, too, too close, too close, but that's me. Um, we'll see where that goes. Uh, we talked about two, like I said, the two solar speed signs, which will have one on Main Street and one on the thirty. And then we got the two portables, we can just move around like we did last summer. The advantages I wrote on there was, we normally only put the speed cards out seven months the most, and we put them white because of weather. With permanent signs, they'll be up year round. So, they're pretty expensive. Uh, I got three quotes, my letter now, I told her I'd get the, the quotes. They range anywhere from twenty-three hundred to forty-five hundred for the permanent solar sign. So, that's kind of where we're at for that.
Okay. Other questions for the chief? If not, thank you very much, Peter. We appreciate it. The audit update, Ron, um, Ron Smith, are you there, Ron?
He's there. He's there.
Ron, can you unmute, please?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You guys want me to start?
Yes.
Okay. So, so, but, but, so I don't know what the typical protocol in the past was, and I gave Mike kind of flavor that I would just hit the hot financial highlights and just talk about some of the things that Melanie and I had, you know, spoken about during the audit process for six thirty twenty-two, and answer any questions you guys may have. How's that sound?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, so, so, so the, 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 the town, where we like to see, one, you've got our hot, you've got our highest opinion out there, uh, you all. It's an unmodified opinion. If we had any problems, we'd have to tell you on page one, two, and three. We didn't have any problems with the, with the town audit. You know, uh, Melanie did a great job, you know, with your books, and certainly she's been there for a long time, had a lot of institutional knowledge, and was a great professional and pleasure to work with, quite frankly, and, you know, and putting this product together. The other thing for, for Castleton for six thirty twenty-two is you had to have something called a single audit this past year because you spent more than three quarters of a million dollars worth of federal funds, you know, for the last fiscal year. Largely, I think a lot of that was over a half a million dollars in, in highway money that you got for some, some highway improvement projects. Uh, we found no findings, you know, in that area as well. So, again, you know, two clean opinions regarding the town financial audit as all, and, you know, and no federal findings as it pertains to your federal single audit. Based on a town operating budget of two point three to two point five million dollars, we like to see you guys at thirty, sixty to ninety days of your operating budget. So, to put that into Castleton terms, about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and about five hundred and forty thousand dollars. And on June thirty, two thousand and twenty, uh, twenty-two, you guys were at a, a total carryover balance, just bear with me, it was six hundred thousand dollars, and I'm just trying to get into how much you guys appropriated for tax relief. Bear with me, you guys. You guys were at about a six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of designated funds, a little over a half a million dollars, that was highway and roads. And I believe you used a hundred and forty thousand dollars-ish to reduce your two thousand twenty-three budget, and your undesignated fund balance was about three hundred thousand dollars on six thirty twenty-two. So, between that and, you know, and where your, uh, the money that you used for tax relief and the money that really wasn't spoken for at the end of the year, you guys were somewhere at about seventy-five days of your operating budget, and I think that that's great. I think financially, you guys are sound. I think one thing that can complicate the world of government is certainly running a utility district. You guys run a wastewater district down, you know, there, and, and I can say that you've got a healthy wastewater district as far as financial condition. You guys had an unrestricted, you know, fund balance of about six hundred thousand dollars for your wastewater department. And I think what makes you even more healthier in the world of wastewater and running that utility district is you guys had over close to six hundred thousand dollars sitting aside in a capital reserve, you know, account down there for future infrastructure upgrades, you know, for, for wastewater. Um, you guys had ARPA funds, you know, set aside, you know, last year totaling, oh goodness, just bear with me, that weren't, uh, spoken for. I'm, I'm talking, I'm pulled over and talking on the side of the road, and I believe, and if Melanie's there, I believe it was north of six hundred thousand dollars that you guys carried forward into this fiscal year ending twenty-three. So, and then we add some capital projects, you know, uh, money that's carried forward, you know, reappraisal fund, building and equipment fund, you know, things like that, in addition to all this fund balance. Town of Castleton's in great financial shape. I'll certainly just say that, so.
Mr. Chairman, I think, um, Melanie's honored, but I, I believe our, I thought our carry, our carry forward on ARPA was a million dollars.
Bear with me, I can confirm that all with you guys, just one second. Remember, this is six thirty twenty-two, just bear with me, folks.
Yeah, sec, I would confirm that also. The other half didn't come in until after fiscal twenty-three started.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. But there's a million dollars almost of undesigned total, but okay, I get the fiscal year, sorry.
Yeah, there was a timing difference after the first of the year, the first of your fiscal year.
Other questions for Ron or Melanie? Joe?
No questions.
Mary Lee?
Yeah.
I'm good. Mike, you got something else?
No, I just want to say thanks to, to Ron, um, and his team, and his, and Melanie and, and Penny, um, for what they did. It was certainly an arduous task, and, um, I'm glad I'm not the one that has to handle it. Um, I get to watch it from afar, but, um, I, I appreciate everyone's effort, and I agree that the Town of Castle is in really good financial health, um, and, uh, no concerns. Thank you.
I, I will, I will say it here.
All right, any, so no more questions for?
No, no more questions. Thank you very much, Ron. We appreciate the update.
Everybody take care, be safe.
You too.
Thank you.
Great working with you.
You as well.
Okay, moving on, approval of road names for Wendy Hollow.
Mr. Chairman, show me present now.
Yes.
Richard Combs, I just finished my dinner. I'm here now.
You mean, you just finished your dinner and you're, you're chiming in now?
Well, yeah, what, we were on the road.
It's okay. Okay, I'm just kidding you.
Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, on, on Zoom, um, we do have representation from the Wendy, um, uh, Wendy Hollow Mobile Home Park, Linda Booton's on, and I know Karen and Linda have been working to come up with the names.
Yes, we have.
It's been a while, um, that, but it's, it's before you now, and, um, so if you have any questions, Linda, I just wanted to let you know Linda's on.
Okay, good.
I have a question.
Question on the road names.
Right.
They have to do this for nine eleven, nine one one.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's the reason.
You're looking for numbers. Okay.
Looking for numbers, is that correct? Linda?
That's the way I understand it. We need, we had to get, um, individual road names within the, the mobile home community, and then, uh, nine one one board is supposed to get us numbers for each unit, and we'll get that information out to everybody.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions on the names?
Mr. Chairman, so Karen is working with the post offices for this as well, and the nine one one boards to get this done, so if they, if there's an emergency down in the park that
Yeah.
we can find them.
Any other que
Well, just for an explanation, um, what I was told was the post office said are the individual street name and number, address, so it would be like Linda Booton, forty-five Wendy Way, lot number nineteen Castleton. So, they're maintaining the lot number on there so they know where to put the mail in the boxes, but also so UPS and and FedEx and things would have another point of reference as to where it is, and also for the fire department.
Okay. Thank you for the information, Linda. Is there a motion to approve the names in Wendy Hollow Mobile Home Park as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Linda.
Linda?
Moving on, liquor license for approval. Global Montello, Jiffy Mart, second class, and tobacco. And the chief has approved these. Is there a motion?
I would move that we approve the second class liquor license application uh, and of the Global Montello Corporation, as well as the, uh, tobacco application they have submitted.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
You there, Dick? You, you got an aye, Dick?
It was.
It was. Okay.
I think, I think Nedra's on too. Hopefully that, that meets what she's looking for because there was a, I think last meeting there was a question on whether, how to make the motions, but if I recall correctly.
Okay, Nedra, did you get the motion?
Actually.
Yes, that was fine.
Thank you, Nedra.
You're welcome.
I believe, Mr. Chairman, those questions were more in line to whether or not the signatures were still required on the documents. We didn't see a place to sign them on the new documents.
Nedra, could you explain that, please?
No, there's no signatures required anymore. The applicants do everything online and then I go in after you've approved them and just put a note in the system that says select board approved in the date of your meeting. So you're all set.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? I believe we, we voted on this, right?
We did.
We have, we're all set. Okay. Moving on to manager's update.
Good evening, boards.
Good evening, Mike.
So the highlighted areas again, I put copies in the back if anybody in the room wants, wants to look at. So on page one, the stormwater mitigation and the new salt and sand shed. I've had, I had a lengthy conversation with Pete Pochuk from the state to kind of get it. He called, actually he called me because he's on the selection board and he had some questions. So I believe he got everything he needed from me. But kind of discouraging part of this is that it's going to take, he said the earliest this project would probably come to fruition and be built was in, is two thousand twenty-five. So we have to, this is the way with all federal grants, it just takes, it's a very arduous process, especially with or tedious even with, because it starts with a scoping study. So then we got over a year of a scoping study. Then we got to go into the, the approval process and then we've got to go into applying for the design and, and construction. And then there's a cap on the amount of money that they provide and there is a municipal match fund, which I wasn't aware of that he brought to my attention that, so basically the town could receive, could receive up to five hundred thousand dollars from the, between TAP and which is transportation alternative programs and the municipal matching funds. And we have two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars of our own. So that would be just with the salt and sand shed. The scoping study also covered stormwater mitigation on Stasi Road. So the whole product was one point two million and of the one point two, they estimated approximately eight hundred thousand would be for the salt and sand shed. And I laughed when I heard that saying that's ludicrous, but now I see that it's not. And so we still have the stormwater mitigation portion to contend with, and that would probably be through a separate grant application. So, but just to take it into its, in the context with the, the salt and sand shed. If we got the full five hundred and the two fifty-three, we're somewhere in the neighborhood of what it would cost to build the salt and sand shed on our property. Because one of the things that, a conversation I had with Devin Neary from Rutland Regional Planting Commission was doing in-kind work and prepping the area, but under the federal grants, that's really discouraged. And he didn't say it's, you couldn't do it all, but it's discouraged because it's supposed to be competitive and stimulate the economy and get, we're not supposed to compete with, with contractors, the civilian, the private sector. So so that, that's why it's, I think it'll be closer to that, to the eight hundred thousand dollar price tag. But the good news is that they're looking at it and if we get, if we get it, at least we're moving this thing forward and not, have been sitting here waiting for a scoping study to be completed and and whether it was feasible or not, because the feasibility is there, it says yes. So now it's waiting for them to give us their, their final approval of the TAP grant.
What is the amount, approximate amount that have to be matched? How much would the taxpayers have to pay?
It's twenty percent of the final cost. So you're talking twenty percent of well, we, we definitely have twenty percent of the three hundred thousand. And then, then the, they can only go up to five hundred. So if we got it all, we're talking twenty percent of five hundred thousand. And then if we get the stormwater part, there's going to be twenty percent of that, which I don't, so we're talking the stormwater is another four hundred thousand dollars and another about twenty percent of that. Now, some of that stuff may, we maybe will do in-kind work, but we already did some in-kind work. For example, there was a culvert that needed to be changed underneath Stasi Road, a thirty-six inch culvert. We already did that work. So that's out of the, that's not even going to be figured into the, to the cost of that stormwater part. So don't really, I, I'm not sure if I answered your question. It's kind of a high level right now with it, with, with the maxes on the numbers.
Just needed approximate as far.
Yeah, so I'd say for the, for the salt and sand shed, twenty percent of five hundred thousand and for the stormwater, twenty percent of four hundred thousand.
Chairman?
Joe?
So what is the timeline for the decision on the TAP portion of this?
March. So coming up this March, we would know if we were awarded the grant or not.
And if we get the grant, is the municipal match money assured?
We have two hundred and fifty-three, so we know we meet the match for, if, if that was a question. I'm not sure if I followed. So if, if we get the three, if we get full three hundred thousand dollars of the, of the TAP money, then we're, we're responsible for twenty percent of that number.
Wait, you, you said in your report that Pete Pochuk informed you that there is a municipal match fund?
Oh.
As well.
So we won't, we can't apply for the municipal match until we get the final numbers on the project and then if we're, there's a delta there, then we apply for the municipal match, which I'm assuming, knowing all this, these numbers now, because we started dealing with a company called Greystone and on what are the costs of these and just the cost of the, of the structure itself, not counting the asphalt slab and the prep work of the ground, that was four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars.
So the, the municipal match funds presumably would plug the gap if our two hundred and fifty-three thousand and the TAP grant are not sufficient to cover the total cost of the project.
Correct, up to a total of five. So between TAP and municipal match, they can't go higher than five hundred thousand. So with ours, it brings up to seven hundred and fifty-three thousand of the estimated eight hundred that the engineers thought.
Any, any other questions on that for Mike? No? Okay, Mike, go ahead.
Thank you. The backhoe was delivered, it's insured and, and then already used at the, especially at the wastewater plant to get that thing in there and dig up a, there was a, there was a valve that was six feet down and buried six feet down in the ground and they used the, the backhoe to dig it up and replace it. And there's some more work to be done with that because there's, there was concrete that had to be broken up and they just were able to get it fixed, bury it back up and we're going to have to deal with it at another point, but with the weather, we didn't want to leave it exposed. Because it won't freeze, it won't freeze six feet down unless hell freezes over. I gave an update that we interviewed transfer station operator candidate. I did offer the individual a conditional letter of hire that went out Friday and he has seven days to reply to me. But I wanted to publicly say thank you to Ryan Dano and anybody that uses the transfer station probably has met Ryan. And Ryan's been with us for almost three years. And he's, he didn't want the full-time job and he is not seeking full-time employment. I'm told he has secured full-time employment. So he'll be moving on. So I'm thanking for, for being a valuable member of our team. I'm on page three, wastewater treatment facility. The change order that was signed was basically what the, the board had already approved for the last, at the last meeting. Just so you know, it was signed. I'm on page four, the top under sewer infrastructure. Ongoing with this Sucker Brook pump station and a complaint by a resident. So I asked Dave Fabrechis to do some follow-up with, with other towns on what they do in their towns for wastewater and emergency power. And the response I got back today from Dave shows that we are we are doing at least what other towns are doing, but mostly, and, and in most cases more for emergency backup power. But I really want the select board to, to kind of understand what I'm saying in this, because I'm not sure if I've made it clear. If that sucker brook pump station has a power failure, it has the largest holding capacity that, that we have. But there's a lot of inflow coming in there and it's filling up instead of taking eight hours, it's taking like two to three hours. So we have a problem and they, Dave and, and his team have reached out and there's just nobody that wants to do the work this time of year. Because they're going to have to excavate all the way from, and, and check these lines from the lake house down to Sucker Brook Pump Station and from Castle and Meadows. So there's a lot of work there. No one wants to really do it in the winter. So we're kind of limping through this. And when there's a problem, like a storm's coming, I get ahold of Dave and Brent and say make sure we're ready to go and we can move a generator. And they've been on top of it. The last storm we had just recently, the, this member of the public showed up and was concerned and we had a plan and we had a pump truck that was, that we would, we could call it. It got really bad. Russ had one on, on the hook, but power came back on and never, never became anything more than that. But, so what I've asked Dave and his team to do is also look at what it's going to cost to get a trailer mounted, you know, portable dual-phase thirty to thirty-five KW generator that we can plug right into the, has the, all the right cords are, are done by our electrician and we can plug in and make the pumps work when there's a power outage. That's the worst. So right now, what we're doing, just, we take the one from Bomazin Pump Station and we bring it up to Sucker Brook and we take the red Onon, the older one that we have, and that can plug into the, the one in Hyattville. Other towns, that would be sufficient. But we're getting complaints that, you know, they want something, this person wants something there permanently. Well, that's not what other towns do, but I also, and I guess I'm empathetic to this because they've already had backups twice in their home and I'm not sure if it's affected other homes, but we have received no complaints about it.
Can I ask you a question, Mike?
Yeah.
There was a backflow preventer that was installed in this property?
Yeah, correct.
Well, then how can it back up if the backflow preventer is installed properly?
The first time it backed up, Mr. Chairman, the second time all it did was it backed up against the backflow preventer?
Yeah.
And they couldn't flush a toilet and they didn't, they didn't realize that.
They what?
They can't, not say the flushing toilet, I take that back. They cannot, they cannot discharge any water from their home. So when they tried it, the water hits the backflow preventer, doesn't go anywhere and it just comes back in the house.
Well, did the property owner know that the power was out?
I assume so. Well, I don't know, at the time they, they may have tried to discharge water, they may not have. They did after that, because they, they ended up at the pump station.
Because the first thing you do when you're out of power is you stop using water.
No. If, if they didn't know their, if they didn't know the pump station was out because it wasn't a full power outage in the area.
Okay.
I, then they may not have known that.
Right.
So we're, we're going to present something to the select board. We're, we're, we did a bid, a bid packet. And we got to submit it and get, get the bids back and I, by the ninth of March, so we can bring something before the Board of Sewer Commissioners on the thirteenth. So there is, and there's a big exercise coming in in twenty-four and it's supposed to be for a long-term power outage is what they're calling it. And I see every municipality going to be affected by a week-long power outage. And do we have the infrastructure to be able to provide the safety, public safety and health to the public? I'd say probably not right now, but we're certainly moving in that direction and and I know, I don't, we want to compare ourselves, other towns, we're probably in better shape. But that's here or there, I guess, because it's our, what's our town? How are we going to be able to handle stuff in our town? And that's, that is a concern with us because we don't have emergency backup power at all the facilities. But not that we can't get there. So any questions on, on that?
So I, I gather you're saying that the, that this is not the whole problem, but one of the ingredients of the problem is this inflow issue, which I understand, you know, we cannot diagnose now while it's still winter time. But presumably this is going to require some sewer line replacements down the road?
Potentially, if this inflow is coming from a fractured pipe or something of that nature that's causing this inflow, certainly we're going to troubleshoot that and it probably would be coming from a broken line because I don't think, where else would it come from?
Right.
So, yeah, that, there's probably going to be some expense with the repairs if we figure out what it is.
You mentioned lake house to the pump station and how, how, how much pipe do we have up there approximately total?
From the lake house to, I mean, I'm guessing.
Well, and the part that comes off the hill as well.
Oh, I, I, I don't, I'm, I'd be guessing, Joe, if I, I said something, but we're probably talking over a thousand feet.
Yeah.
And there isn't, there isn't any way to identify that problem without digging up the lines?
We're going to camera them.
Okay.
So we're going to televise and, and camera, put a camera to it and televise it and record it so we can, we'll be able to see it ourselves, but there are also, some of these things are down twelve feet in the ground and people don't want to deal with it in the cold and, and stuff like that. So and expose things that are cold. So no, we have got, we've received no takers on our invites to businesses that do this type of work. Anything else? Okay. I'm on page five. So as, as late as today, this road inventory, I, I, I looked at this today and what Dave and Brent had sent me. I made some changes and some additions to it so that we can get an idea of the status of our roads as it pertains to paved roads, I guess. And there's a lot of data that goes into this, a lot of different categories or factors. But the bottom line is we can tell you with, with absolute certainty that what we're putting in the two hundred, sorry, hold on, I got people trying to get in the meeting. Richard and Melanie. Dick again.
Looks like Dick is in, but maybe not Melanie.
Right. So well, I can say with absolute certainty, even without this, you know, product to, to show us, visualize it that the two hundred and ninety thousand dollars we're putting in, we've just keep following farther and farther behind with this stuff. And I am going to come to the board after we get this thing finalized with a couple different courses of action on how you, for your consideration. But we, we need this done first to give a good assessment of it. So kind of that's where I'm at right now, but so the, the thirteenth of March, I plan on coming back to the select board with our analysis of it all. I'm on page seven. So I can take this off there from now on. The fuel system at the garage is fully operational. And has, well, has been for a little while. I just, I don't think I'd give you the update. So and And. But thank you for the, to the board for approving all that and getting that working. Uh, at the bottom of page seven. Of the roads and streets, as of last meeting, when the select board had authorized the early posting of roads, that was completed. Uh, of course, now we're in cold weather. And, uh, but. Our roads really truly took a beating so far. Uh, we used all the stone that we had and had to purchase more to fill in these ruts so they're passable. And it'll be, we're going to get another mud season. Uh, no doubt. And we're just going to keep plugging away at it and make sure they're, they're passable and we'll deal with all the repercussions in the spring. But we got to at least keep them possible. And I've got no, I, unless you've received complaints, I haven't received any, any complaints from the public about the postings, so. Um, I'm on page eight, garage, highway garage. Uh, so the contract was signed for the old red door and sent in and, um, I asked the highway foreman to coordinate. A date for the removal and replacement of the old doors. I did find out that one of the new ones is on the west side or one, yeah, the one that was replaced in two thousand fourteen is on the west side. So three new ones will be replaced on the west side and one on the east side. I'm on page nine. Um, said public outreach with the police department, the chief Montello. Um, did some. Tested his audio visual technology skills and made a recording of a, read a book to. Kids that will be shown in school. And. And then I'm not sure if you're aware that. Castleton cares, um, just Officer Shereco, uh, is on the board of directors. He does a lot of work with them. And invited me down there to see all the good things they do. So I'll be taking a tour down there. But, um, he's. Be really proud of what he's doing down there and. So we thank him for his service there.
Is Castleton Care, cares still in the church basement?
It is. Chief already told you on page nine, uh, chief already told you about the new cruiser. Um, but as of the last meeting, uh, he did have a shortfall in funding to equip the vehicle. And there was mentioned the sale of the two thousand fifteen to use the. Couple, well, at that time it was like twenty-three hundred dollars that he was short. Um, I want to make sure that hasn't changed before I stated, but, um, I'll be coming back to the board to ask to use. That bound or that portion of the sale book. From the sale of the two thousand fifteen Explorer to pay for the outfitting of the new one. Um, I'm on. Still on page nine, the bottom. Last meeting, I, I made a statement in public, um, about Fair Haven or my concerns, I guess, about. Some lack of coverage in Fair Haven. I did speak with Chief Humphries. We had a, a long conversation. He sent me his schedules and he. He. He was able to explain to me that they do have gaps in coverage. They can't fill some shifts and during those times. He calls the state police and he'll say. If it's something that can be held for, for a, um, Fair Haven police officer, they'll tell them to hold. And if it's something that's an emergency, then they dispatch the state police. They ask for the, they ask for the state police. They don't ask for Castleton. But being a former law enforcement guy that, uh, when somebody else is in trouble, you. Use the word, we'll use the term, tend to slide that way, uh, just in case something goes on and you can probably appreciate it too, Mary. Um, so sometimes they may leave jurisdiction here and help out a fellow. Fellow officer if they're in need. Um, but I wanted to make sure I corrected, uh, and, and make that statement in public. Um, on page ten. Under emergency management. So we, we do have this, a really energetic, um, resident, uh, named Cindy Yell, who was on the fire department, but has. Been really interested in the emergency management stuff and she's attended all kinds of online training, some, um. Some in-person training. Um, and we have another, we have a class in April, we're going to down, down in Massachusetts for three days. We had, um. A ca- we had a capabilities brief by the Rutland Area Disaster Animal Response Team, uh, last week. Um, to deal with, uh, issues with people. Uh, that want, that need to evacuate, but don't. Don't want to leave their domesticated pets and how radar can help find locations, uh, that are close by the shelters so that. The person that's displaced could actually see their pets and ta- help take care of their pets, not be. You know, geographically separated by a long distance. Um, but I want to thank Cindy for her. Desire to step up and help our emergency management. Also on page ten. The local, the, the twenty, it's EMPG, uh, twenty local emergency. Management and EOC enhancement grant. We did receive it. We didn't get the full amount of that because I could not get three quotes from a vendor or a contractor that would do the work. So that's not. Um, it's not. It's not atypical, I guess, uh, and right now in this time. So we lost a possibility like. Would be seventeen, so we lost probably another, I'll say. Eight thousand dollars. We could have lost another eight thousand dollars, but I just couldn't get three quotes and they wouldn't look at it without three quotes. Um, but we did get the forty-four hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty cents to. Um, get the emergency automatic transfer switch and do a bunch of the wiring and the other things that the garage for our backup emergency. Operations, well, that will be backup, will be primary. But more work to do.
You want us to, uh, address that now, Mike?
Yeah, so I, I, on the backside, I asked the board to accept the grant award as presented and authorize me, um, to do the work. Um, as it was presented in the, um, contract or the grant application.
We all have a copy of this.
Yes.
Right. Is there a motion to approve it?
I would move that we approve the award of the EMPG twenty local emergency management and. EOC enhancement grant. That, uh, in the amount of four thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty cents.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there a discussion?
Is there a, uh, I guess I was going to ask whether there's a need for. Signatures?
Yeah, there is. There is. And I might put the signature one in there. I think there's only one place, right, Jim, on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you have to authorize either me to sign it or, or the chairman can sign it.
Going to authorize the manager to sign it?
Yes, I would add that to my motion.
Add that to the motion? Okay, that okay with you, Mary Lee?
Yes, it is.
Alrighty, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Mr. Combs is off the, off right now, so.
He's off again, okay.
So we got three zero. Alright.
That'll be in the blue folder here, Mike, for you.
Alright, thank you. And, um. On page twelve at the top. The app under apparatus of the fire department. Um, I tried sending photos to select word members. I'm not sure if you were able to see those of that, that truck. Uh, it was such a large plow, it was going into a cloud-based. Um, application and you have to access it in there, but, um, I, I, I'm going to put together a presentation anyway, so you'll see them. But, uh, myself, Chief Goyette, uh, First Assistant Chief Dan Ducharme and firefighter Joey Smith. Traveled to Forest Grove, Pennsylvania, um, on the sixteenth and seventeenth of February. And we met a mechanic from Harab Fire Apparatus and members of the Forest Grove Volunteer Fire Department and we hit inspect a two thousand and one aerial ladder. Uh, platform, um, and. And, um. Uh, all indications by the mechanic and what we saw and the, and their maintenance records and what we physically saw. For two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in asking price, um, that is a. A really good price for this truck. Low miles, low hours and very little to fix on this thing. There wasn't even a crack in the leather seats. And that's unheard of when you talk of two thousand and one vehicle. If you go and look at ours, it's leather, I mean, they just wear out and they've really maintained this, um, to a high standard and, uh. And the chief will come back to you. Uh, with a list of things that, uh, he would like addressed prior to taking owner or putting into service here and. Looking at High Rob Fire Apparatus, which is near Syracuse, New York, of having it brought there, the repairs made, the decals put on it, all that stuff. And then brought here, because once we bring it here and put it into service, it's hard to take it back out of service. So, uh, more to follow from, from the chief. But, uh, very impressive vehicle and very competitively priced vehicle, so. Any, any questions on that? Okay, uh, last page, page thirteen, um, public concerns, uh, infrastructure, um. Just, I, I, I think you're all aware, but, um, the, the village school ran out of fuel. Um, and I'll take the blame for that. I didn't realize that it could say there's two thousand gallons on that gauge, but. Those, the. In the bottom of the tank where the fuel goes into the building, the pipe. It sticks up and there's two thousand gallons of fuel that are there, so you never get to use two thousand gallons of fuel in that tank. And that's typical with most fuel tanks and this is ten thousand gallon fuel tank. Um, so, uh, Paul McClure did some calculations and, and he said, it's, he told me like nineteen hundred, two thousand gallons. And then lo and behold, he said, you look at that gauge and down in, in the boiler room, somebody made a little line. Didn't know what it was, but for them it meant something and that's where it gets to this point, order fuel. And so it ran out of fuel, um, filled up the fuel filters, the water and, um. He had to get it, fix it and get it back running. So it is working and we still had three thousand gallons of fuel delivered. Um. To be able to keep the place heated right now.
Did we ever get the water out of the tank?
Not yet. The company that, that, um, Al from. Uh, Sam's USA gave us, because no one does it around here. We've called them, multiple people have called them and no, they don't call us back. I don't know if we're hitting the wrong number or. Or they just don't want to return the call because they don't want to do that job. Uh, maybe in good weather, they'll call me back, but, um. So it's just an ongoing thing and try to find someone to do it and I haven't done that yet, but. If it's below, if it's below two thousand gallons, and it, because they're saying there's three inches and there's more than three inches of that two thousand gallon, so.
Why not leave it there?
It's, it's, that's why it's probably there, Mr. Mr. Marcus, is because people are like. Can't suck it out of there anyway, but there was, he said there was water in the fuel filters, but I don't know if that was. Previously or not, because they're, they're, they haven't changed in a while, so. And then he had to order some parts for the, the heaters and he's going to give me a quote to clean the coils. His, his statement was that. They're, they're really clog, they're, they're really clogged and, and you know, what really clogged is, but, um. That it's probably dropped efficiency by forty percent. Because it can't exchange the air, uh, the heat and the exchange are there, so it's, it's all clogged up with just. Years of dirt and dust and that kind of stuff and, um, it's, uh, it's not efficient, so. Efficiency will increase most likely according to Paul if they're cleaned. So that's, he's going to give me a quote to do all that as well and he had to replace a blower. Because the blower that failed was the one, of course, it was the one near the boys locker room where the pipe froze. And it was in the wall, so that has to be replaced and that's not, that hasn't been completed yet.
Now, I noticed you sent us, uh, this bill. Was he going to give a? Better breakdown of it?
Yeah, I, I, I stated that in there that, um, I just got it. I just saw it today and I'm, I'm asking for a. A breakdown of what service he provided, because it's, it's, it's seven hundred and sixty dollars, so I'm assuming it was because of the emergency callouts. But I got it, I want at least a detailed breakdown so we know what we're paying for. So you have to answer your question. Yes, I will do that. And pending your questions, uh, that would conclude my report.
Any questions for Mike? Joe?
Uh, I just one about the, uh, material that was sent to Aaron Stewart. Related to, uh, well, from the Brighton Software Inc. Company. Is this something that we should know, know about or will be hearing about in the future meeting?
It, it is and, um, matter of fact, I had a call tonight from one of the, uh, sales reps from that. We just didn't have the. There's a lot of stuff in these programs that we're going to come to ask the board to consider, um, that. And I, I just really didn't want to get into it tonight because I, I want to, I don't want to spoil it.
In that case.
Yeah.
With throw my question.
Okay. Um, but yeah, future, yes.
Thank you. Mary Lee?
I was, I'm not trying to be elusive. I just, I think there's some good stuff that, but I want to put it together in a briefing together and.
Anything else?
Hi, just to.
Mary?
From the economic development board, could you keep a running tab of all these businesses? That just don't want to come in service and maybe we need to recruit businesses to come to this area to do that kind of work.
Sure.
Because that does seem to be, have a theme in. A lot of things you're trying to accomplish that no one, one wants to do this kind of work, Jim.
Yeah, it's, uh, and a lot of it, they don't want to work for municipalities. Because the way we pay. A lot of it is, um, that, that's true with the tree services. Uh, because we have to go through the warrant process and stuff. There's, there's been comments made to me, um, by local tree companies that. Uh, well, really I should retract that. One tree company stated in perfectly that. They won't work for municipality because. Okay.
Please do not.
They're a small one, one man operation, one person operation, so, um, but.
I really try to. But you know, everyone's been back with this, nobody wants to.
It's across, not just me, it's not just the town of Castleton for sure, but. Um, I don't, I, I look at what affects us. So that would conclude my.
Okay.
Unless there's more questions.
Any other questions for Mike? Saying, saying none. Okay. Move on to purchasers for approval. I believe all we had to do was to sign. What we signed. I don't see any other. Any other purchase orders? Oh, wait a minute. Yes, there is one here. Yeah, there is one here. And that's Martin Enterprises Incorporated. Decanter. Encore Radar Radar Speed Messaging Device, must be the police department. Twenty-two thirty-four.
No, it should, that should be sewer, as, as up top, as it says, right top, right hand corner. Not on the form itself, Jim. It say sewer?
Says police.
Okay, I don't even know what the hell that is. First I'm seeing that one.
Wait a minute, maybe this, maybe there's another one here. No. MSM Public Safety.
Okay.
That's it, Mike. Well, want me to hand that to somebody for motion part? It exceeds a two thousand dollar limit.
So like, did you say you don't know what? I, I haven't seen that. I think we should. Prefer this.
Sure, okay. Okay, I guess now we're on to warrants for approval. We have eight of them. Does someone care to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. That we pay. Number zero two two seven. R for six hundred and fifty dollars. Number zero two one six. For thirty-six thousand eight seventy-three thirty-nine. Number zero two two three. For five thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars and forty-four cents. Number zero two two seven. For twenty thousand four seventy-eight oh eight. Number zero two one six P. For sixteen thousand sixty-seven dollars and forty-two cents. And number zero two two three P. For sixteen thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-six cents.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye.
I would move that we. Still warrant number zero two one seven P. For six hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-three cents. And zero two twenty-four P. For six hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-three cents.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second it? Any discussion? This is Richard Combs. I refuse, recuse myself. So be it. All those in favor indicate by saying hot, uh, aye and Dick recuses himself.
Aye.
Aye. We have just enough, three. There you are, Mary Lee, they may be a little messed up. While they're doing that, are we supposed to do anything with this dog ordinance that we have here? The dog ordinance, we have a copy of that.
Chief was supposed to talk about that, darn it, um. It's, uh, the, the, they never got signed, it was, the minutes of the meeting. Had it, uh, that you approved it, but then we didn't have, we, we can't find a copy with signatures on it.
Okay.
Um, but it was, this was in two thousand nineteen, I think.
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure how you want to handle that, because how many people were not, were on the board in two thousand nineteen? And that were, that.
Well, it has, um, Bob, Joe, and myself.
And Bob's not here, so.
Right.
But if you, if you would agree to, because the minutes reflect that, it was, it was approved, um, and sign it, then. Because the reason why, just so the rest of the board numbers know, is Chris Forrest has to go and testify. And the judge is asking him where to get his authority for him and all this, so, yeah.
So if you remind me when I get back into town on Friday, Mike, I'll be happy to come in and sign that. Or Karen, remind me.
Okay, you got it.
But are you?
Because I was there, my name is on that document as well, I assume, right?
No, it isn't, uh, Dick, it's, um. Uh, Bob Spalding, Joe Mark, and myself. But if you'd like to sign it.
I just want to make sure he was at the meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Make sure that before he, if he wasn't there, uh, I'll, I'll research that, Dick, and if it is, I'll let you know. I'll make sure that you.
Yeah, it's odds of me having been there, good decks. Yeah, I, I've only missed like, this is only the second meeting I haven't been present for ever, so.
Alright, thanks, Joe.
Okay, so you want us to, uh, approve this as amended?
If, y- yes, I would, um, I would, uh, just make a note on, uh, something on the, on the record that says that. It was approved, but we, we can, we'll have a signed copy.
Would someone care to make a motion to that? Uh, this is heavy, this is heavy stuff.
I would move that we, uh, reauthorize the, um, dog ordinance. Uh, previously approved by this, by an earlier version of this board. Uh, but, uh, at the time unsigned, and that we, uh, proceed to sign the ordinance, uh, tonight. Following approval.
You want the date, Joe? Want the date?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, um, twenty-eighth day of October, twenty nineteen.
As he said.
What second that?
I'll second.
And a second? Any discussion of the dog ordinance? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Thank you.
Mary Lee, want to pass that over to Joe?
Got your dog ordinance, Mike.
Chris needs it more than I do right now, Chris is under the gun with the judge, so he needs it more than I do. Mr. Chairman, is there time for an alibi?
An alibi?
Yeah, means I didn't cover something, I want to.
You, you go ahead, take care of the alibi.
Um, the, there's a, there's an energy, I, I think I sent it out today to, by email, but there's a grant coming up. For energy upgrades, municipal buildings, I, I just want to make sure that, eh, if you didn't see that, I'd make sure I send it back out to you.
Can you make copies, because there's something like twenty-one pages or something?
Yeah. I will make copies and let you know when they're in your mailbox.
Okay, because there were twenty-one pages on one and thirty somewhere on the other or something. Were two different ones, and there were a lot of pages.
The, the grants are coming out fast and furious right now, with some, we don't have a very, a long turnaround time, so. Was kind of trying to keep up with it right now.
Okay.
No, ru- depends on what it is, Ruffel Regional Planning Commission will help on that one.
Okay, moving on, um, any select board comments and or concerns?
I have a question.
Question, okay, Mary Lee?
Have you, uh, managed to set up a meeting with the, uh, superintendent? Sideboard, so it's a dual meeting?
I was just talking about that earlier, um, they have not replied. They, they received it, but I'm, I wanted, I wanted to talk to, I wanted to go into executive session anyway, talk to the board.
Okay, Joe?
I just wanted to ask, uh, about the town plan provisions. Uh, is, is it the case that we will be acting on this on the thirteenth? Correct.
Now, I know Liz is like here, but she was saying it had something to do with because pack two fifty was changing. And we wanted to change it before they changed theirs, just.
If she's been working with Karen on this, then they put it off of this meeting and go into the next one to get their ducks.
Yeah, I think, I think if that two fifty changes, we will know about it until May. Yes, that's in the legislature.
Right. And, uh, enough. As of today, I received confirmation from the university that they are gonna be able to host our Zoom capabilities. Um, in the auditorium and the Jefford Center, so, um, I got, so I did get confirmation that we're good to go there.
That's at, uh, six thirty, right? Six thirty, next Monday?
Sure, I, I'm looking at it right now, but.
Yeah.
Is that when it starts, or that's when we have to be there?
I, I just want to start, that's.
So we have to be there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I will have the copies of the revenue stuff that Mister Market asked for in previous years to make sure that's there at the. For the public, showing the revenues for those departments at, like, transfer station. Police department, stuff that you generate revenue.
Anything else, comments or concerns? Mary?
I'm speaking as Mary McIntyre now, I would have brought it up before, but I have a little trouble transitioning. So, um, I just wanted to let you folks know that, um. Uh, myself and my husband, uh, ran a, in the middle of running a pickleball program at CBS.
Okay.
Very big turnout, thirty-five signed up, and we're having steadily over twenty people who run them for two weeks. People are seriously looking for. They are so ecstatic and they want more time. An issue is going to be, you know, they're coming to me for more time, I work the job. I'm happy to do it Sunday morning, and Bob and I went and played out the court, and we're happy to do that. Um, and we continue. One day, oh, we can't give more time, they also want more programs, and I'm just saying this to you because these people are crying. Um, I was there last week, turned in paperwork from pickleball. During the open gym. These kids are storming in there, uh, last, like, day, Monday. You know, it's a winter day, but it wasn't a winter day, correct? There's nothing that parents could do with them, and they were going in there and it just is heartwarming. And I don't know if any of you guys have time or would make time to go and see the relation. Of people using that building. And I hear what you're saying about the solution. And I know what's been talked about with proposed buildings. But this town hasn't had a lot of luck. That's why we don't have our sideboard meetings next door, because that building got shortchanged. That building over there shouldn't have bigger, slight, um, um, correct?
Yeah, the original one of those where Jim sits now, so it was even smaller, so, and the, the original conference room was to be the other side.
But in any event. What we have there, we know what it is, it's not perfect, but man, it is serving people and it can serve people. And it serves taxpayers, I know everybody's concerned is about taxpayers, there's some really happy taxpayers. And, uh. I think that needs to be said, and I think it needs to be wanted, uh, by, before us making decisions that, um. A lot of our taxpayers are very happy and, and willing to, to pay for these programs. This program is not, is very feasible, and most have said, I would pay a lot more. I, if I want to want that, I'd have to pay more, um. It's gonna be a little bit of a communication, it's gonna have to be worked out, uh, amongst the recreation board. And it's gonna be a little bit of a learning group, but I think, making some phone calls, things like that, we can find out. How much the supervisory union charged to run that gym, it's not gonna be rocket. Um, there's AU teams that need gyms, this district is in major shortage.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
There, Mr. Chairman, just to know that that's being, that's out there, uh, social media, um, I think, uh, our rec director, Bo, is. The, maybe the media, the, the marketing person, but I just saw one as recently as tonight with videos and, and people using it, so it's being marketed. Out there, I can tell you that.
Okay, any other select board concerns? So, move on, do we need a brief recap? I guess not. You need an executive session, Mike?
I, I would for real estate, please.
For what?
Real estate.
Real estate? Okay. Is there a motion to go into executive session with the manager for real estate?
I would, so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second? Does this in, does this involve?
It's not, this is not, um, this is the village.
Village, okay, good, alright, okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, we're in executive session for real estate.
Let me stop everything. I move that we lead executive session with no action taken at, uh, eight thirty-six. Mary Lee?
I'll second that.
Okay, Richard. Dick, Dick seconds it, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there another motion?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
We have two seconds. That's, that's great.
Third to them?
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We were adjourned.